Two thirds at a minimum.
Okay, we ready everybody? All right, let's call this Planning Commission meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM on the dot. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Commissioner Diedrich.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Here.
And Chair Ladue.
I am here as well, thank you. The next is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a young lady named Abigail sitting in the front row that's gonna lead us on the pledge tonight. Please stand. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item number four presentations. We don't have any presentations tonight. Item number five, Agenda Approval. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
We have no modifications to the agenda.
Perfect, okay. Can I, I need to get the commission, the commission's approval for the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move on to item number six. This is Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. I understand we do have some speakers tonight, Madam Clerk?
We do.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this short statement and then we'll do that. So, "This is the time for members of the public to address the commission about items which are not listed on tonight's agenda. The Brown Act limits the commission's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time that such comments are made. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes on any single item." Okay, all right, Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Christopher Good. You can stand up at the podium.
Go ahead and join us at the podium, please.
There's a section of Bundy Canyon that has a blind curve humping it right after Marietta Road, heading towards Wildemar, that is very dangerous. These three families live there, myself, my neighbors. There's access in the back. There's a very cost-effective way for us to go in where there's already concrete road going up and then a wall blocking and then we could have a short distance of three driveways and we have safe access. Nobody gets hurt. I don't wanna see anybody get hurt anymore. Tired of the accidents. The easement that I believe you guys have proposed to bring us around, we have to pull down oak trees, go over a culvert, and it's still a steep grade that will have to be paved because it's too much dirt. Most cars can't get up it. That's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Good. We'll have our staff look into that. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Okay.
Next, we have Julian Placentia.
As Chris said, we're here for the same concern. We're concerned with the safety of the people. We lived for many years there and we've seen people smashing into each other and it seems that this space of the project that is being handled is going to be the last. We feel that it should be even, not the last, or even sometimes I don't think that you guys have a day for us. It seems like neither the city of Menifee or the other city that is next to it wants to lay claim of it. So therefore, it kinda is, we're left out in the dark. Once this, this project is done, it's gonna widen the street by one lane, a medium, and a bike lane. It's gonna widen into our property quite a bit and we're also concerned with the wells that we have in the same direction. We were wondering, once this closes off, we won't have access as we do now through Bundy Canyon and the access road that Chris was talking about is an east man for the electricity that runs behind our property. And we wanna use it once this gets closed off because it would be kinda like an alley for the properties that are there rather than having another street open up. And we're gonna have, we would be sandwiched between the traffic in the front of us and Bundy Canyon and the street that is, might be open to us and the sound, it'll be ten, fifteen feet from our windows and then the close-up of traffic that is going to be on Bundy Canyon is just way too much noise for us. So we're wondering, what would your plans were for sound walls? What would your plans were for access to our properties? What would your plans were to move our wells? Because it seems like everybody else except for our area, our shore area, knows their time, who's gonna do their work, their CD, with the Wildemar. They're getting watered when this project runs in. I don't think you guys have any plans for running water. We're gonna be still on wells. So my main concern is that you're not taking this serious as far as safety. People have died there. Many, many accidents have happened and it just seems that, you know, nobody wants to own that piece and we don't know why. So what we want is to take us as serious as you have taken the other faces and do not delay as much as, we don't know how much you're planning to delay.
Thank you. Can you tell me what the cross street is again? It was Bundy and... So on Bundy between Marietta and... Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
I have no requests at this time.
Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. The staff is here and available, but they're not gonna be able till after the meeting tonight. So if you wanna stick around, it's pretty exciting stuff tonight. We always have a good time here at the Planning Commission, so if you wanna hang around, they'll be available after the meeting to talk to you. Why is everyone laughing? That's... Okay, all right. All right, on to the approval of the minutes. Can I get the Planning Commission's approval for the March 22nd, 2023 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, there's nothing on tonight's consent calendar. So moving on to the meat of our meeting, item number nine, Public Hearing Items. This is the 9.1, Stacks Up Storage Expansion. This is item 9.1. Could the Planning Manager please introduce this item?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair. The following item is gonna be presented by Senior Planner Russell Brown.
Thank you, Orlando. Good evening, Chair Ladue and Commissioners. As mentioned before, the project before you tonight is the Stacks Up Storage Expansion. The project site is located near the southeast corner of Holland and Han Road, approximately one mile south of Newport Road. The general planned land use designation and zoning classification for the project site is Economic Development Corridor Zone, Community Core. Surrounding properties have the same designation. Per the Menifee Municipal Code, an existing self-storage facility may expand within the footprint of the existing development with the approval of a conditional use permit. A little background about the site. The existing facility was approved by the county in 1997, prior to the city's incorporation. The approval consisted of a 65,000 square foot mini storage, 1,075 square foot caretakers unit, and a 425 square foot manager's office. An application was received early last year, February of 2022, for a major modification to that county-approved permit, a conditional use permit for the expansion, as well as a minor exception for a 10% reduction in the onsite landscaped area. And a PC workshop was held in June of last year and feedback was provided on the proposed architecture and materials of the building. The site in its entirety is approximately 8.4 acres. However, the existing development is located on the easterly four acres. The proposed footprint is approximately, the proposed footprint is approximately one acre of those four acres. The project includes a three-story, 31,000 square foot self-storage building, two single-level, 2,800 square foot buildings. The project includes three marked parking spaces and access to the site is via two driveways, one to the east and one to the west of the proposed three-story building. So per the Menifee Municipal Code, 10% of the development area shall be landscaped. This equates to approximately 15,050 square feet. The project proposes just over that at 15,170 square feet. So staff worked with the applicant quite a bit on the architecture and as you recall, this came before you as a workshopped item in June of last year. The proposed building located along the project frontage is primarily comprised of interlocking metal panels with a stucco finish that provides an appearance of conventional stick-built construction. Decorative ledgestone veneer is utilized in vertical columns to break up the long building facade. The ledgestone also encompasses the lower third of the building to provide additional visual relief at the street level. Glazing is also used to highlight the corners and break up the metal building while concealing the exterior staircases that provide access to the interior three-building levels. Raised parapets are used to conceal the rooftop equipment enclosures that house the proposed AC units. So we put together a timeline showing the improvements to the architecture since the original submittal in February of last year. So the top elevation is what came in with the first plan check. The bottom elevation was presented to the applicant, was presented by the applicant to the Planning Commission at the workshop. These two elevations were submitted earlier this year and demonstrate the progression that was made and the bottom elevation is what is before you tonight. Additionally, the project includes foresighted architecture, as even the interior elevations, not necessarily visible from the public, include enhancements that are used, similar enhancements that are used on the front elevation. As you can see, the proposed materials are shown on the left side of the screen and consist of ledgestone and a textured metal paneling that resembles the conventional stick-built construction. Staff and the applicant feel it's quite an improvement over the materials that were previously proposed, which are on the right side of the screen. We wanted to include some slides showing the Holland Road Overpass project as a reference. So the applicant has tied in similar materials used on the overpass, such as that ledgestone. Additionally, the view on top there is looking westward. The building would be on the left side of the screen, you know, probably even with the railing that is shown. So the applicant did put together a cross-section that shows the relative heights of the overpass and the three-story building. The self-storage building is approximately 49 feet in height and will be about 17 feet taller than the finished elevation of the overpass. So the roof, the rooftop equipment will be adequately screened when viewed from the overpass. So the environmental review, so a negative declaration was prepared. Public review period ran from March 20th to April 10th. No public comments were received on the project or the SEQA document. And staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution, adopting a negative declaration in the supporting documentation and direct staff to file a notice of determination. And second, adopt a resolution approving the major mod, conditional use permit and minor exception, subject to the conditions of approval and findings and conclusions in the staff report. And staff is available if you have any comments or questions. The applicant is, I believe, out of town this evening. However, the representative, Mike Nigar, is in the back and is available if you have any comments or questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Nice presentation. Do we have any questions for the staff? Joe, go ahead.
In relation to the construction of the overpass, Holland Overpass, is it supposed to be completed first and then the proposed facility is gonna be after, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Randy?
Yeah, hey, Daniel, that's, that was my question too. And 142, Street Improvements. It says that this development would like to move forward with the building permit issuance prior to construction completion of the Holland Road Overpass project. The development shall be responsible to construct specific, that's the question I have, what shows? Specific improvements consistent with the approved design drawings for the Holland Road Overpass. So you give the, that they need new access frontage, off-site relocation, off-site recycled water and sewer lines, off-site storm drain. So is that, those plans are going to be approved concurrent with the street plans?
Actually, though, all that work, all that scope is already in the city's project as part of the Holland Road Overpass and the city CIP project. So it's just, I think the plan is for the Holland Road Overpass to be complete. In the case, for some reason that this project, you know, wanted to go earlier, then they would be responsible to do that. Some of that scope of work that's in the CIP project, but it's not anticipated. It's just kinda disclosed here in the conditions.
So obviously, it's transition design to work with the bridge.
Right, so the developer's plan is to wait for the Holland Road Overpass to be completed and all this and 142 will pretty much not be applicable because the city's doing that work.
Great foresight, Daniel. Good job.
Thank you.
All my questions that I had have been previously answered by staff, including the one we were just talking about, but also the height in relation to the building and then access to the parcel to the east.
Okay. So your questions have been answered?
Answered already, yes.
Okay. Joe, you have another question? Okay, can you, Joe, talk into your mic, please?
Okay. I have a general question, maybe to the department or to the applicant. For, at the completion of Holland Overpass, then we will have two traffic trends. One going over the, going over the overpass, speeding up, and then one into the storage, slowing down. So we have two patterns of traffic on the same lane. Is it a problem?
I think, I mean, I don't understand what you mentioned as far as speeding up. I mean, traffic's gonna be flowing over the overpass and just like access to any other commercial shopping center or any other road. You know, you'll have to, like you said, probably decelerate to make a right turn. But it's, it's standard, you know, as any other typical intersection when you have a local street and then a arterial or a, you know, a major roadway. But these, these facilities, they don't generate very much traffic. I mean, they're, they're very low, you know, they're generating a low amount of traffic. This additional expansions is only generating 71 trips per day. So it doesn't warrant any type of deceleration lane or any other design features. So there is no, there are no concerns from engineering staff regarding the issue you mentioned?
Anything else? Okay, I wanna mention that I, I really like the progression of the drawings and the way that the building's gonna look. I appreciate tonight the extra effort you went to demonstrate the height of the bridge versus the height of the building. I know when this came to us as the workshop, I asked for some kind of rendering of the bridge and the building together, so we could kinda see what it's gonna look like. In the absence of that, that wasn't able to be done. I do appreciate that you went to the effort of telling us about the size of the bridge and then the building and we can confirm that when the cars are driving over the bridge, that we're not gonna be looking at the rooftop and the air conditioning units of this building, right? We're gonna be seeing the nice glass and the rest of the siding that we've decided on. Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 6:19 PM. Madam Clerk, was this hearing legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Perfect, thank you. And have we received any correspondence?
We have no, yeah, no correspondence received.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nigar, do you wanna join us at the podium, please? You are the rep for the applicant tonight?
Yes, and the applicant's here as well. Good evening to you. Yes, Mr. Don Clausen here, Wood Stacks Up. You gave us good feedback and I'm pleased that you're pleased and thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Thanks for working with staff and coming up with a good, good-looking building.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you agree to all of the conditions of approval?
We do.
All right, fantastic, thank you. Do you guys have any questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this agenda item?
We have none.
Okay. Well, that was fairly easy. We're gonna close the public hearing now at 6:21. We'll bring it back to this side of the ropes and have discussion amongst ourselves. Is there any discussion that you guys would like to have amongst each other?
I would just like to add that when I moved in here, 2008, that's where I got my moving equipment from, truck and all, and that is the perfect spot for the, for the business they run and now they're going to put a really nice building, so. Just wanted to add that. It's gonna be around for a while.
Thanks, Randy.
I'm just happy to see the improvements that were made since they came in for the workshop with the stairways being hidden and and the knowledge that going over the overpass, we're not gonna see the roof or anything like that. So I'm very happy with the improvements to the project.
I agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate that the developer was willing to make those improvements. It looks more like an office building now. And it's, when I saw it, the staff report, I was very impressed and it'll be kind of a gem sitting right next to the, to the overpass. So I appreciate that and the additional cost, obviously, it was in it. You made a good progress. Appreciate you working with staff.
I would like to express our appreciation to the proposed, proposal. It's an excellent application of the facility, the location. I went, I drove by over the weekend and it's conforming to the neighborhood, to the mixed-use area. So, and I used to go there to rent your U-Haul. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joe. Anything else? Okay, so there are two resolutions for adoption. We will need a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion. Are we gonna do an electronic vote?
Yes, and there'll be two separate votes.
Okay, right. Oh, I gotta switch back.
Who motioned that?
I motioned, Chris, Chris second.
Thank you.
Okay, and that passes five to zero. We had the second, the second resolution. We'll need, we'll need a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. So move. Okay, Joe, thank you.
I second that.
Then second.
I'm pressing it, but it's not going.
What's your vote? I'll put it in. Okay, thank you.
Yay.
Yeah, there it goes.
Okay, that passes five to zero. Thanks very much, guys. Thanks for coming in tonight. Thanks for working with staff. Really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to 9.2. Could the Planning Manager please introduce this item?
Thank you again. As you can see, today is the Russell Brown show, so he'll do the second presentation today.
Thank you for the introduction, Orlando. Again, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The next item up is the Village at Unipero Multifamily Project. The project site is located approximately two miles east of Interstate 215 at the McCall Boulevard exit. The site is generally north of McCall Boulevard, south of Heritage Lake Drive, east of Unipero Road, and west of Menifee Road. The general plan land use designation for the project site is 8.1 to 14 residential dwelling units per acre and the site has a zoning designation of medium-density residential, or MDR. The proposed density is approximately 13.9 dwelling units per acre. The site is bound by typical single-family uses to the north and to the east, Boulder Ridge Elementary School to the west, and an approved commercial project known as McCall Square to the south. So the applicant originally submitted an application in 2014 for a project. In 2015, another Planning Commission workshop was done and at the workshop, concerns were brought up regarding traffic and public safety due to the nearby school. The applicant made some changes to the project site, as you'll see in some future slides here, and many of the concerns that were brought up have been addressed. In 2020, though, the application was officially withdrawn due to inactivity. And then it was resubmitted in February of 2020 for the major plot plan and the tentative track map. So the purposes of the tentative track map is actually to consolidate the three existing parcels into a single parcel, vacate an existing public road and drain a jism through the center of the project and dedicate additional right-of-way along Menifee Road, Heritage Lake Drive, and Unipero Road. They are not, not creating additional lots. So the project site is approximately 17.87 gross acres. It also it proposes 24 buildings. Each building contains, each building contains 10 units and the units consist of one to three bedrooms. The site also consists of a rec center, pool, dog park, several internal passeos, and gathering areas. 523 parking spaces are being proposed and site access is via, vehicle access is via two driveways, one off Heritage Lake Drive and the second off Menifee Road. As mentioned in the original submittal, there was a driveway that was off Unipero Road and when, when it went to the workshop, concerns were expressed and that was relocated to Heritage Lake Drive on the north there. In that driveway location, though, along the western boundary, a pedestrian access gate was added. So there could be increased, you know, connectivity to the, the school to the west and the commercial center to the south. So the site contains approximately 250,000 square feet of open space area. And again, as mentioned, there's the rec center, kinda towards the center of the site, which also contains a dog park to the, along the southern boundary there and several totlots and passeos that connect the connect the various buildings throughout the interior of the project. project. Each unit has a minimum of 115 square feet of private exclusive use area, patios or balconies, and there's an enhanced landscape buffer, 20-foot landscape buffer along the southern border, which buffers, acts as a significant buffer between the, with the commercial project to the south.
I have a quick question, if we go back to that. On, I notice the upper left-hand side, there's that little open space, it's not, there's a building on the upper left-hand side, and straight below it is parking with a.
You know, I don't have the landscape plan in front of me, but yes, it will be lawn, it'll be, it's not a basin, it's not, there's no facilities or amenities proposed there, so yes, it will be a, just general open space, whether it's turf or trees, we can pull up the landscape plan following this meeting. Yeah. So park, proposed parking for the project, so that on the left side of the screen is the residential unit count, the right side of the screen is the parking breakdown. So the parking is determined by the number of bedrooms. So again, one to three-bedroom units. For the 240 units, 473 parking spaces are the minimum to be required. However, 523 parking spaces are being proposed. 384 of the 523 are located within a garage, so approximately 73%, and then there will be 139 surface parking spaces. So the project proposes two architectural styles and two color options. The first is the Spanish elevation, which utilizes neutral earth-and-tone colors and incorporates clay-themed roof tiles and clay pipe decorative treatments, along with the decorative Spanish tile around the entryways. The second is the Tuscan elevation, which incorporates a combination of stone and stucco, and includes arched openings, porticos, and the Juliet balconies. The proposed recreation building sits towards the center of the development and acts as a hub for the project. The building contains a community mailroom, leasing office, fitness room, and lounge, club area. Outdoor amenities include a pool and spa with lounge area, bocce ball, bocce ball court, and gaming lawn. The proposed Spanish architecture complements the theme used throughout the project. SEQA, so a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for the project with the public review period from March 20th to April 10th. As of preparing this presentation, we did receive two emails in opposition. Since then, I think we've, two or three more emails have come in in opposition of the project. I think those are included in your, in your blue folder. However, staff, as well as the, our SEQA consultant, MIG, prepared responses to those comments, and we feel that the MND adequately addresses their concerns, and no further analysis is required. So staff's recommendation, again, is to adopt a resolution, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and the supporting documentation, and two, adopt a resolution approving the tentative track map and major plot plan, subject to the conditions of approval and the findings and conclusions in the staff report. And that completes staff's presentation. We are available if you have any comments or questions.
Great job, thank you once again. Good job. Do we have questions for staff on this project?
Yeah, I have a question. Good job, Russell. Hey, what's the per-acre density?
The, the range is 8.1 to 14 dwelling units per acre. It figures out to be about 13.9 dwelling units per acre.
Pretty efficient, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for staff? Okay, very good. Okay, we're gonna move on to the public hearing for this item. It is 6:33. Madam Clerk, was this hearing legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and I know that we've received some correspondence in our blue folders.
That is correct.
Any other correspondence that we don't have?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, is the applicant here with us tonight? Okay, would you, would you please join us up at the podium? Yeah. Whoever's the responsible party.
Bill Cunningham, the responsible party, North Bayport.
Thank you, Bill.
And I'm Vince Chupka, I'm with Humphries and Partners Architects.
Thanks, Vince. My main question is, do you agree to all of the conditions of approval?
We do.
Fantastic, thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
I was able to drive by the site over the weekend, and right now, along Menifee Road, there's a power lines, which is just an eyesore. So your development, when looking at your project, the architecture appears to be more like townhomes, attached townhomes, beautiful. So it's gonna enhance the environment, the aesthetic appearance of the neighborhood. So that's one thing I saw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant directly? Randy?
I agree with Joe.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. That was easy, right? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It is 6:35. I did, said 6:33.
We have a public comment.
Oh, we have. You know what, I just skipped that step.
That's right.
Madam Clerk, do we have public comments on this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to do that.
Frank Alameda.
Frank, thank you, sir. Sorry, I did not mean to skip over that whole part of it.
No issue.
I know that's important.
Appreciate the time. Good evening, council members, residents of Menifee. I, along with many of the constituents here in District 4, am in opposition to Plan 22-0268, Village at Junipero. My name is Frank Alameda, and I'm a resident on Lasso Way, just houses away from the proposed development. I would like to outline a few categories as to why many of the residents are not in favor of this development. Number one, there are unfavorable living conditions brought on by this multifamily living. A, noise, there are 240 more families living in a condensed square footage that would typically consist of less than 100 single-family homes. The congestion, while they are producing 523 parking spaces, past experience has shown that is still underserving that community with guest parking, and we feel that there's gonna be severe congestion and overflow into the residential streets that we reside in. C would be the traffic, the volume of the multifamily residents and their visitors will cause massive traffic jams in a neighborhood that's already seeing these traffic jams due to the nearby school and park. Number two, the stressing of several systems. So as I mentioned, schools, Boulder Ridge Elementary is an already impacted elementary school. I myself could not even get my daughter enrolled last year into TK because there's not enough teachers, so we're already underserving the community, and I don't see how adding 240 more potential families that would be having kids attend that school would help the system. B would be your sewer, water, and roadways. Again, we're more than doubling the amount of residents that would be in that typical square footage from a single-family home. Third would be the ambulance and police services. We already are experiencing higher volumes of theft and burglary in that area, and increasing the population density seems that this will stress the system even further. Number three is the culture. Most of the residents that I live nearby moved to suburbia. We moved away from these multifamily residences in larger cities and came out here to grow with our families, and we want to preserve that culture that's currently being cultivated. So I would like to also propose a different type of development. There's already a shopping center that is being proposed to the south of this area, land area. We feel that most of the residents here in District 4 feel that there are several benefits to the residents and to the city itself. Number one being higher revenue to the city with commercial retail space. The property taxes on commercial real estate are closer to 1%, which is roughly a 33% gain to the 0.74% property tax that would be assessed to this multifamily. The sales tax generated for the city, as well as increased quality of living by providing current residents with more diversified shopping options, and an opportunity to create more jobs in the marketplace and promote more entrepreneurs in our community.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I believe we had one more question from my neighbor. We just wanted to understand what was the easement on the north side of that proposed land development on Heritage Lake?
All right, thank you. We're not allowed to directly respond to you, so we'll take your comments into consideration at the right time. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments?
We do not.
Okay, so it was specifically just Frank, sorry, sorry to skip to you over, Frank. Okay, now it's time to close the public hearing. Okay, it is 6:40. It's like my first time, I'm a rookie. Okay, we're gonna bring this back to this side of the ropes. This is our time as commissioners to talk amongst ourselves about this project, so.
Staff, I'll just mirror the questions that previous speaker had. Can you address the, what was it, the north side easement?
It's a storm drain easement, so that'll be vacated with the, with the tentative track map.
So is the storm drain going, well, is that line A, and that's all, what is that?
No, this is a smaller, more local facility, and it'll, it'll actually run either in that easement or in the right-of-way, storm drain line, storm drain pipeline.
Randy?
Yeah, the previous speaker, Mr. Alameda, is that his name? Could you say that all his, all that he mentioned has been addressed as far as traffic, and I mean, all that has been technically taken into account, right? All the different questions that he has.
Yes, so one improvement that this developer will do is modify the signal at Heritage, Heritage Lake Drive and Menifee Road. And yes, I mean, both Menifee Road and McCall are six-lane urban arterial roadways, you know, they have, they can handle a lot of traffic, you know, while it's not, you know, while they're not ultimately improved, they will, they will be. The city has a CIP project right now in design, it's in a 60% design stage to widen McCall, make improvements on McCall from Oakhurst to Menifee Road to Junipero, and then the commercial shopping center, McCall Square, south of this project is in construction, and they're widening McCall Road from Junipero to Menifee. There's, you know, traffic signals at Menifee and McCall, and Junipero and McCall as well. So yes, we've analyzed the traffic study, reviewed it, and, and the developer's also responsible for several significant fair shares of several projects, pretty much from the 215 to Menifee Road on McCall. So that's, that's their main, you know, access point, so they have, they will be contributing to that improvement, to those projects.
Commissioner Madrid, if I can also add, as part of the review process, we are required by law to do a SEQA analysis. So we did hire a consultant to help us out do that analysis. All of the areas that the resident indicated, noise, traffic, public facilities, infrastructure, all of those areas were analyzed, and it was determined that there were no significant impacts, and therefore that's why there's a mitigated neck deck before you guys. So all of those mitigations are included a part of the project, and the applicant is responsible to do those mitigations.
Right. And this has not been a zone change, right? This is how it was zoned, so that's why the applicant could come in and, and apply for that project.
Correct. Multifamily use is a permitted, is a permitted use in that zone. There's no, no zone change, no general plan amendment, that is correct.
Yeah, the adjacent lots are commercial.
Right, you know, in, I guess, common, you know, land use, when you're laying out these various zones, you've got single-family to the north and the commercial to the south, so this zone kind of serves as a buffer to kind of bridge those two, so we feel it does that.
Okay. I actually feel, I actually agree with that. I think it's a good transition between the single-family to the commercial that's being built on, on McCall. I agree with that. Ben?
Yeah, I'm just happy that, you know, a few changes since it was last year, I'm happy to see that the driveway moved from the west side to the north side to avoid the school over on that side. I'm happy that they're only two stories because it does come up against single-story homes, so I'm glad that they're only two-story buildings, not three-story buildings, like some of them in the town center. And just, you know, I generally, a well-rounded city needs different types of housing products for different people, for younger people, for younger families, so I am in support of this.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
As an appraiser, I used to be an appraiser, residential appraiser for more than 20 years, and every time when we appraise a property, we look at the economic base for that particular neighborhood, and we always look at the distribution of uses, zonings, and the flexibility, the diversity are actually helping is, are healthy indicators for the neighborhood. So, and I do see a large residential development on the west side, about two or three blocks away, so the neighborhood is changing, and we are now with, with a residential project, and this one is a multifamily project. They're all fitting in quite well. I drove by and I clearly see, I clearly saw compatibility and conformity in the neighborhood with the architectural style. I was so impressed with your rendition. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anything, Chris?
So I'm in favor of the project, but I wanted to address the concerns that were had there. I understand the desire not to have you buy a single-family home, you want a multifamily next, I totally understand. I believe this was zoned multifamily years and years ago on the general plan. Is that correct? How many years ago was that zone?
I believe the general plan has been, has been the same designation, but the zoning did change in 2020 when we did our comprehensive update.
So I think it's important to, you'll notice that this commission tries very hard to place multifamily in appropriate areas. There is state law requiring us to increase that, so that's why we're doing it. One of the things, when we look at the design of these projects, if you look at the layout of it, it is done in a way so it's more aesthetically pleasing, but also draws a little higher, a nicer product, the grouping of the buildings, there's more open space, it draws a better product. So we try and do that as a commission to design it that way. We try to get the traffic off of, by the school and move it over to Menifee Road, so we try and do all these things to mitigate the effect on, on the local single-family residences. But the end of the day, there has to be a certain number of these. So I like personally the way it's designed by the grouping of the buildings and the open space. I've been in other multifamily developments, even in other parts of Menifee and Temecula, some are just nice, but most of them are grouped so close together, it's like driving into towers, and this has a much more open feel to it, so I appreciate the design on that and the architecture. So I'm in. And this has a much more open feel to it. So I appreciate the design on that and the architecture. So I'm in favor of the project.
Thanks, Chris. Any other additional comments, Ben?
I just wanted to add one more benefit of it is, you know, there is that commercial center that's planned to the south of it. And I believe, you know, in order for the tenants to come in, there needs to be demand, there needs to be homes. And so by adding these roofs, that's going to increase the ability of that center to actually open and function, which is going to assist and be useful for all the residents in the area, single family and multifamily. So I think that's another benefit of this moving forward.
I totally agree. Randy, did you? Nope. Good. Okay, we're good to go. Okay. I want to mirror Commissioner Thomas's comments about zoning and housing for everyone. Again, I I think it's a good transition between the single family that we have existing and then the commercial that's going to be built. I mean, the hard truth is that these these types of projects are not always the most favorite. We we often get the those types of comments and concerns. Many of the concerns, Frank, that you brought up were emailed into us, so that they're in our folders. And as Mr. Brown stated, they they, I think they adequately addressed the concerns that were brought up in the emails. And then some of the concerns that you brought up as well. I know it's not always an exciting development, but I think it is important. So on that note, I am also in favor of of the project. So if we're done with our comment section, if you guys have any other questions or comments, Randy?
I just got one question. So we don't really have anything to do with the schools. So that's kind of concerning, but do we take that into consideration, Russell or Orlando?
Yeah, the the project was initially routed to the school district for comments. They didn't indicate any any issues with the with the proposal. The applicant is also required to pay impact fees, which will also assist with expanding any school facilities that they may need.
Thank you. That's a good, that's a good call. Okay, good. Everybody got their questions and comments out? Okay. All right, so there are two resolutions for adoption, the first one being the MND. We'll need a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation.
They're moved.
Chair, just as a clarification, you are able to take both resolutions in one motion if you'd like.
Okay, we can do that. So that's the the mitigated neck deck and the plot plan, the tentative track map. So do we have a motion and a second for that, for both?
I move.
Randy is first. Joe second. Thank you. Thank you, Ty, for that. Randy, seven issues again. Oh, got it. You got something on your fingertips? Okay, that passes five to zero. Thank you. We're gonna move on to discussion items. There are none. And I know Cheryl's not here, but we're gonna go with Orlando tonight. Any community development director comments, sir?
No, no comments for tonight, other than just wanna say that last week, we came back from our Planning Commissioners Academy, and it was very successful. And we had good discussion, and I think we came out with a lot of good ideas and things out of the academy. So it was nice spending those three days with the commission. Thank you.
I agree, sir. Thank you.
You know, following that, they they had a good idea about Teagan did. We should make the public more aware of how things are zoned around here, so it's not a surprise when the when the applicant comes in. I remember that talk we had. That was good.
Okay, item number twelve, Commissioner reports on committee activities. Do we have any reports on recent committee meetings that we've had? Nope. Okay. Future agenda items, any? Anybody have any future agenda items?
Do we want to put Bundy Road on a future agenda, or is that out of place?
What do you want to?
We don't have it. Yeah, we don't have it. A start. We haven't to go off of, right? Okay.
So staff can discuss and then bring back any informational item.
Yeah, I would actually like to have even just a five minute, you know, graphic of what's going on in the design of that curve and that area, so that if citizens come to us and say, what's going on there, at least we'll be educated as to what is happening right there.
Staff will be happy to bring something back and get you some information.
Good. So that's how we get started, right? We ask the staff to take a look at it and get back to us with the presentation, so. We'll we'll have our staff look at it, and they'll they'll come back and just check in with future agenda items and feel free to come in and and sit through another exciting planning commission meeting.
And give Daniel your contact info.
Okay, that is it for tonight. We're gonna adjourn. It is six fifty-four PM. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.